We're live.
We're live. Okay, it is eight o'clock. Uh, so we'll go ahead and get started. We've got a pretty long agenda today. Um, so we'll go ahead by starting out by uh role calling ourselves in.
Blatcher here.
Raymond here.
Zeno here.
Given here.
Burton here. Uh, we're gonna have a reading of the IDA mission statement.
Our mission is to promote, develop, encourage, and assist in the acquiring, constructing, reconstructing, improving, maintaining, equipping, furnishing industrial manufacturing, warehousing, commercial, research, and recreation facilities, including industrial pollution control facilities, educational or cultural facilities, railroad facilities, and continuing care of retirement communities, to provide financial assistance and thereby advance the job opportunities, health, general prosperity and economic welfare of the people of the county of Shiningo, and to improve the recreation opportunities, prosperity, and standard of living.
Thanks. Uh, let's record children. Corey's here. Uh, need a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty twenty one, regular meeting minutes?
So.
It's gonna be in a second.
I'm sorry.
You guys there? Randy, any discussion? Okay, we'll vote.
Blatcher, I. Raymond, I.
Zeno, I.
Given I.
Corey, I. Burton will abstain, I wasn't here. Need a motion to approve the bills and invoices? It doesn't look like anything's out of whack, and the airport utilities are a little higher now because obviously the building is being used, and keep in mind, those are built out to the leasing. How about would you, yeah, October thirty first, twenty twenty one, financial statement?
Thanks, Randy.
I just looked at me.
Which we appreciate, thank you. Um, so overview of the financial statements that you received in your packets. Uh, currently in our checking account, we have just over sixty-three thousand dollars. In our money market, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um, we do, note number two is our financing lease, which will continue to decrease, uh, that's the financing lease that we have with Cascoon. Our total current assets are seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Um, under property and equipment, uh, those are currently valued at uh just over almost six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, with our total assets at one point four million dollars. Um, we have about twenty-three hundred dollars in our accounts payable, which we'll go over that in just a second, which will sit on there. And then item number six, notes are pre-credit rental income, which is the property that we own at the incubator. Our total liability and fund balance right now sits at one point four million dollars. On page two, our H receivable Report, uh, we have sent an additional notice back to Norbit Shiningo Solar, that's where the Advent Services for the pilot agreement that they have with us, which is overdue. Um, we did send a reminder to them again. Um, also on here now is the ProTal property, so as a reminder, uh, we are, we are paying for all of the bills associated with that building, and then we are sending them a bill and they're reimbursing us, so we will have that money come back in. Um, so this is us sending them that bill. So we're a month behind on those. On page three, uh, under our H payables, just the two things I want to point out, the techno bill expense, twenty-eight sixty-three, that is getting reimbursed to us from the attorney. Uh, there was some paperwork back when that pilot was um was sunsetted due to the, them closing. Um, there was some paperwork that was never filed uh with the county, and so we had, they were doing something with the property and they needed us to get that paperwork sent to them right away, and they needed a FedEx. Um, so their attorney is going to be reimbursing us for that expense that we did get that taken care of. Um, and then under the public hearing for the evening sun, I just reminder, any of the public hearing costs, um, including legal fees, have nothing to do with any of our pilot projects, do get reimbursed by the attorney, by the, by the people that we're doing the project for, so that will again be something that comes back in as a revenue. Under statement of activities, um, under the airport building rent, you'll see that number is growing, which is nice, when now that we have that building rented, so uh we pulled in um just over eighteen thousand dollars with our airport building rent. Under pilot fees, um, we've had no new activity um in that since the last report, but you can see what we've um, what we budgeted, and then what under year-to-date actuals, what we actually pulled in, some we brought in a little less, some we brought in a little more. That was due to last year, when we did the budget, we only speculated with each of the projects we bring in, and we didn't know until we got close to the closing what that final number would be. Um, so year-to-date actual is the, the column that you should be looking at. Right now, our total revenues are one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, and if you look at what we budgeted, we are over budget um for the year in terms of revenue, which is always a good sign. Under expenditures, uh, just two items I want to note that went over budget. Um, one was the auditing expense, um, it came in just a little bit higher than what we budgeted uh last year, um, but we were very happy with the company that we use, and we've made those changes in this year's budget when we get to that to reflect what the cost actually was. Um, and we were over, we, we've gone over on legal expenses, and that again is just due to additional legal expenses that we've incurred throughout the year due to the various projects that we have been working on, and again, taking note of that and try to project best we can into next year. Um, under airport utilities, again, that will be higher just simply because there's people in the building now and facilities or utilities are being used. Um, but reminder, that is coming back to us now, um, as a repayment. Right now, our year-to-date um revenue over expenditures, uh, we're, I'm sorry, our total expenses at year-to-date are one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. We are under budget with expenses, so that's also a good thing, we had budgeted a hundred and sixty-three thousand. So right now, we are um looking at just about forty-five thousand dollars um as net revenue for the year. With another month to go, so. Sorry, I'd like to go a little bit more detail sometime just to give you an overview if there's any questions, so I'll have you address.
Good. Thank you. Uh, need a motion to approve the financial statements for October thirty first, twenty twenty-one? Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote?
Blatcher, I.
Raymond, I.
Zeno.
Given I.
Corey, I. Burton, I. Okay, bills and invoices for the second time. Uh, need a motion to approve the bills and invoices?
So.
Yes.
Give a second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll vote?
Blatcher, I.
Raymond, I.
Zeno.
Given I.
Corey, I. Burton, I. Uh, executive director report.
Um, so just like last month, I'm gonna just give you a quick update on the other happenings and the organizations that are associated with the IDA, so you are aware of what we're doing. Um, under Commerce Shiningo, we are in the, I hope we're in the final steps in our strategic plan. The staff has been taking the um goals and priorities that we worked out as a board and trying to make some action steps to go along with those. Once we have the strategic plan done, I do plan on doing a bit of a roadshow with it, and I would like to make a presentation to the IDA board at a meeting in early twenty twenty-two to go over that with you, because a lot of our goals and objectives um are encompassing of all the organizations under Commerce Shiningo, and that includes the IDA. Um, we are kicking off our Leadership Shiningo class of twenty twenty-two, we're actually having an event tonight at the Sherburne Inn um at five oh five, so if you or anybody you know is interested in the Leadership Shiningo program, tonight's a good night to come and find out more about it. Um, and then we are taking applications, and then the class will start in a new year. Um, under DCC, uh, we have the Creative Works Building next door. Um, there is gonna be a bit of a changeover with that, so I think I had mentioned this for um last month, that that building is for sale, so DCC owns that building, but um we're looking to basically give it back to the community, we did what we wanted to do with it, we bought it, we rehabbed it, we fixed it, so it wasn't gonna get turned down, torn down, and now we're looking to um put that asset back to the community, so that building is for sale. Um, the Creative Works nonprofit board that currently manages that is having some changeovers, so um Creative Works will no longer be the person that's renting that building from us, it's going to turn over to two of the people who are subleasing it, um Kate and Tabitha, who have space in there. Um, so we're gonna be working out what that looks like this month, but just so you know, there's maybe a little bit of change next door. Um, no new news on the hotel project, just had it on there as a heads up. Hoping that we piece some things up the DRI, um, we do know that last week, this past weekend, the state started making announcements about DRI awards. Um, I have no idea how long it's gonna take or what order, there's ten regions and up to two winners per region, so I don't know. I wish I could tell you that I knew if we got that or not.
Have they announced anybody from our region?
No, the only region that's been announced is the capital region and Detroit. So if they take a week to do one a week, it's gonna take a while. I hope not, I, I'm guessing with the holidays and all that and travel, so I'll just get a call one day, when we're here together, so, maybe by next month, I'll know. Um, and DCC did close two loans, one was for Jerry's Inn in Cambridge, and the other was for Forge Brewing Company in Coventry, so pretty excited about being able to help those businesses get um going and expanding. Um, and the other work I've just been working on is um budgets, it's been budget, budget, budget season uh for all of the organizations, and we'll be talking about our budget a little bit later. Um, one more note, we are going to be holding um a webinar about mandatory vaccinations for employees. We've had a lot of questions from our employers, big employers, small employers, wondering the state standards, the federal standards, what do they need to know, are they willing to put in a vaccine mandate? Um, what do their employers need to know, what do they have to legally do for their employees? Um, so because of that, we are working with Kofflin and Gerhardt, they have a labor specialist, and they're going to be leading a webinar for us on December seventh. Um, it's going to be virtual, starting at eleven thirty, and um it's gonna be a chance for anyone to join in that wants to, regardless of, you know, where you are, how big your company is, membership or not, it's open to anybody and everybody. Um, and if you want to participate, just let me know. That is my report, don't show any questions.
All right. Hearing none, we're to move on to old business.
Uh, so Norbit Solar, uh, we, our board did the final authorizing resolution at the last meeting. Um, right now, we're just waiting for the closing date, um, it's in the hands of both attorneys right now, just going back and forth with the paperwork. Um, we saw some communication yesterday or the day before, um, I just know that they want to close it by the end of the year, but we don't have a good step for that closing yet. Can we just keep going, Brian, is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so next order of business is the pilot application for the Hybridge Wind Project in Guilford. Um, so just to recap, we did hold a public hearing on October twenty-seventh. Um, we provided in, in your packet and in your email, you have a list of everyone who came and spoke, we have a link, we have a link on our website of all the letters that we received um at the meeting, um, even after the meeting, and you know, again, I, we, we were under no legal obligation to take comments that were accepted, sent in after the public hearing closed, but for transparency and making sure you, you had them all, we wanted to be as transparent as possible, so we did accept letters after the fact, um, up until about two weeks ago. Um, so all of those that we received were on the website, and they were organized in the way that we received them, so that you knew. Um, the next steps for this board, um, we are going to, um, first of all, you have a letter that Norbit Power sent in, there were some questions that were raised um last month, and that they were addressed, I don't know, um, to start with, if you have any questions or response to that, Jeff Miniff is here from Norbit, and he can speak towards any of those questions. Um, we'll take a look at the cost benefit analysis, um, just talk briefly about the pilot breakout, and then the next step for you is to um consider approval of the final authorizing resolution. So just a, just a couple of reminders about this, you know, our, our duty as the IDA is to only consider the financial implications of this, um, it's not about the project itself that has already had its checks and balances and processes, so you know, the role of the IDA is to look at the financial aspect and the, the tax benefits that the company is asking for. Um, you know, I think also, one, one of the things that I think um something that has come up from the public hearing, even since, is there's a feeling that if the pilot doesn't happen, that the project stops, and that's actually not true, they just would have to go a different way to do it. Um, so I, I think that that's, you know, it makes it a little bit more difficult and a little bit more complicated, um, it doesn't mean that the project's not gonna go forward, so I, I don't wanna give you any feeling that if for some reason you don't approve the final authorizing resolution, it stops and it tracks, that's actually not true. So just a couple reminders I wanted to mention to you before we move on. Um, so first, I guess because of the, the letter that Norbit sent in response to last month's discussion, do you want to start there, Brian?
Yeah, did everybody have a chance to, to look at that letter? And did it raise any other questions at this point? Nope, apparently not. Um, I guess the only other question I would have that came out of that public hearing at this point is, you know, I, I got the feeling that, you know, the community really thought that if we didn't approve the pilot, that it would cancel the project. How we understand what would happen if the pilot was not approved to this project?
Sure. Um, so my understanding is that, um, you know, the company could still get the tax abatement that they're looking for through the state, the sales tax, which is a huge reason why they use a pilot with us, it's not so much about the property tax um relief that they, that they're, they're doing with this, it's not about that, it's more about the sales tax. We can do much more than the state can, so they could still go through the state channels, and the state could approve the project. The downside of that is it cuts us out locally, so we would not get that money for the IDA, for the local municipalities, for the county, and the schools, in the way that we are through the HCA agreement, through pilot agreement. Um, so if, if this project is going to happen, it's, it's better for us locally, because if it goes through the state, that's, there's no guarantee that that's going to happen. Um, so some of the, the financial assistance that we're looking for, they could get through other channels, it's just they're going through the IDA, it keeps it local, and makes us a part of the projects, and make sure that, you know, we're taking care of it ourselves, and going through the checks and balances, working closely with the town. That's Jeff, did I? Thank you.
Okay, so just to summarize what you said, and make sure that I understand it, that declining the pilot does nothing as far as ending the project, the project would still move forward, potentially still gonna have benefits, just the town, the school districts, the IDA, anybody involved, when the pilot would not reap those benefits, correct?
I don't think that it's that they wouldn't get any benefits, but, oh, but certainly our IDA um and the local, local groups would not, it would, it would look much different than it is now. The money would be filtered through the state versus through us. The state would step in and basically move forward with the project without us as a part of it. I think with any of the projects happening in our community and in our county, we want to have a handle, we want to have some oversight, and you know, part of, part of our role as the IDA is that checks and balances, the, the monitoring of projects, that would be happening on a local level versus a state level, and I think we'd rather have our local people keeping an eye on it than having the state do that. It gives us more insight in making sure that all those checks and balances are happening, that what's promised is happening, um, that the, you know, sales tax promise is being met, that the jobs that were created are being met, that's happening with us, with this organization.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on any of the comments they heard during the meeting, or any of the comments and letters, or anything like that? Anybody need any more clarification at this point? No, silent, silent, silence is compliance, right? Uh, so I guess at this time, I, I don't see any reason we're not moving forward with uh making a motion to approve the resolution?
Can I quick just do the cost benefit?
Oh, yeah, please.
Sorry. No, that's okay, um, so just real quick, uh, just want to make sure we talk about the cost benefit analysis and also the pilot payout. Um, so the estimated sales tax exemption right now is um about seven point four million dollars. The mortgage tax exemption is one point two six million dollars, and um the, the um current escalator that they're looking to pay through the IDA is four thousand dollars per megawatt, with a two percent escalator for thirty years. Um, so when we look at the breakout of what that pilot would look like, um, of the hundred percent say of the tax that we would be pulling in from the pilot, ten percent of that would go to the town, fifty percent of it would go to the county, and the balance would be broken up between the two school districts, GMU and BG. A little bit heavier to GMU, um, eleven percent of the project is in GMU School District and four percent is in BG, so we'd be looking at breaking up that final balance equitably between the two school districts based on their percentage of the project. Any questions on that? I know it's a little different than what we've done in the past, usually we try to make it even across the board, but um we've talked a little bit before about um the town's interest, the town has an HCA agreement, um, they're, you know, what they're looking for from our pilot is, you know, no more than ten percent, um, which gives us the ability to give a good chunk of this to the county, and then also a decent amount to reach the school districts. Which the school districts are not having, you know, a lot of times when we do this, we try to say, who's gonna have a financial implication, who's going to, you know, have to, if we're gonna bring in a big business with a lot of jobs, there's gonna be a lot of kids and families, that's a burden on the school districts, that's not this project. Um, so I think, you know, schools will, will get something out of this, which will be good for them, and they'll be able to plan it for the future about what their benefit this will be, but um there's no additional burden to the schools, um, as there is for the county and the, the town.
I'd be curious, did, did they actually negotiate separately before we've done pilots? We've actually been part of the negotiation process between the school districts and the municipality where this is going at, or, or this was directly done with municipality and school district?
Well, that, we, we are actually direct, yeah, it's a little bit different because of the HCA, so the HCA is separate than the pilot. Um, that's something that the town worked out separately with the company. Um, we, our part, part of our role is to make sure that we have those communications with municipalities and the, the town regardless, and so we have, we've had conversations with GMU School District, um, we had a email conversation with BG, make sure that they knew what was going on, give them an opportunity to give us feedback, we did have those meetings, our attorneys were present, um, so we still did that, because we, we're treating the pilot, it, it's completely separate from the HCA agreement. It's only good for us to know that they have the agreement because their HCA has a small tie into our pilot, but our pilot is separate than from what the, the town is doing. But we have had all those conversations. Good question. Okay, and now if you're ready.
So at this point, I'll entertain a motion uh for the final authorization of the resolution as follows, resolved that the Shanger County IDA approved the final authorization resolution for the Hybridge Wind Pilot Application as presented. Can I get a motion?
So.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote?
Blatcher, I.
Raymond, I.
Zeno.
Corey, I.
Burton, I.
Okay?
Thank you. We'll move forward with the next steps, and we'll give you a prize, and what, I think we're looking to have this closed before the end of the year, so we'll keep you updated on what the process is. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to new business?
Yeah, so uh just letting you know, we're still, um, the controller audit is still ongoing, um, we, we joked with Alan that we should probably include him in our Christmas party at this point. He's enjoying being with us, I think. Um, but we're also, we're very close, uh, Carrie Anne and I met with him yesterday to go through the last few things that he's still looking for from us. I think it, this, I, I said shared it with you last time, um, it's been very helpful for someone like me who's still fairly newer in this position, only a couple of years in, um, and not having done this before, to have a process audit, um, those checks and balances, the things that you should be doing, and things that you need to know about, things that I was not aware of, um, and things that we're doing, but maybe just not as clearly defined as what the state is looking for. So it's not, it's not that we're not doing some things, but you know, part of that was, for instance, having the cost benefit analysis on the agenda and discussing it in a meeting. We've always done that, we've always talked vaguely about the cost benefit analysis, but it's never been purposeful, which is part of, you know, we're being as proactive as we can, so now we're, we're making that step, we're trying to be proactive, we're making sure that things that are supposed to be discussed publicly, we're being purposeful about it, making sure it's reflected in the minutes, that kind of a thing. Um, and you know, probably the other biggest thing that is likely gonna come out of the report is some of the monitoring, cleaning up our processes with how we monitor projects, how we're, um, and not so much, it's not that we're not monitoring projects, but what's the proof that we're getting back, how are we checking the sales tax, how are we checking job creation? So, um, he's been very helpful in with some of those tools, and we'll be, um, already implementing, you know, we're not waiting for the report to make the changes, we've already started internally to do some of those things, which, you know, he's been very happy to hear. Um, one of those changes will be coming up when we talk about the budget and the um Administrative Services Agreement. Again, just good process discussions to have, um, I know that he met with our chair and our treasurer, um, I don't know if Adam gave anything to say.
So I've met with Alan twice, uh, he's great, uh, he's very informative, he, he knows, he knows his stuff, um, and he's really, he's really kept this to a process of, of how to make us stronger, how to make us better. Documentation, 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 we've all worked in the corporate world on some level, uh, you know, if it's not on paper, it didn't happen, uh, so a, a lot of our conversation has been going forward, changing some verbiage in some of our documentation that's slightly outdated, um, and then uh just making sure we're, we're really uh crossing our Ts and dotting our Is when, when it comes to documentation. Those are the, the main things we talked about, um, you know, he, he was able to go back and watch a, a lot of our meetings online and whatnot, so he knows we're doing things, uh, and we're doing things properly, uh, it's just, then we have to document it properly as well. That's basically the gist of the two meetings I had, very quick, you know, I wasn't in there for hours.
I think Alan and I talked more than, um, Norbit, Carrie, and Horace, and, and you know, because he used to work here, so he, he had a, a good handle, I enjoyed talking with him, so. He, he, just like Brian says, in the period, he, he was talking about the documentation. And one he, you know, was, was talking about was a questionnaire that has been done with the pilot in regards to documentation for the sales tax exemptions and for the employees who were there from, so it was something that I really thought about, that we were supposed to do that, and he's over there with the questionnaire. But he also brought up that there was new laws passed in two thousand and fifteen regarding the IDA, and then in two thousand and sixteen, the laws regarding, which, there were new state laws regarding the IDA, then in two thousand and sixteen, more laws were passed in the state, and he said the best thing to do is Google uniform tax exemption policies.
Yeah.
So he recommended we do a minute, we overlook the new policies, it's not hard. His feeling was that we may not have been aware, but the policies were, and not just because of you, but because of our parents, yeah, he's interesting. Yeah, he, he really encouraged us not to reinvent the wheel.
Exactly.
Somebody's already doing everything, you know, it's out there, it's online, uh, we don't need to go and spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on attorneys to draw up new documents and things of that nature. Like you said, it's, it's already out there, somebody's already doing it, do it the same way as somebody else is doing it, so.
Yeah, no, I, I found it very helpful, so I, I feel like we're, and I feel good about where we are and moving forward and, you know, cleaning up some of our policies, and you know, we have a review of them coming up anyway, so it's a good time to, to do them, and just making sure, like you said, our eyes are dotted and Ts are crossed, so. All right, um, our budget, I'll try to make this as painless as possible. Um, actually, the IDA budget is probably a bit easier of the four budgets I do, so for this organization, so, and thank you again to Randy, he's been a great um supporter um last year and this year, I think we've just continued to improve um our process of how we do the budget for the year, and thank you for your ideas and feedback, I really appreciate it. So real quick, I, um, I want to just go over the Administrative Services Agreement, and the copy that you have, um, looks a little messy because it's a red line change, I wanted you to see what the changes were, because this really reflects the change, our biggest changes in the IDA budget. Um, one of the biggest changes that, and one of the biggest things that came out of the process audit was this Admin Services Agreement that we have. Um, it raised some questions, particularly because of the flow of money, previously, um, for those of you who are newer and are not aware, where this, we start over, this Admin Services Agreement is the agreement that Commerce Shiningo has with the IDA and DCC um for the management of those organizations, so as you know, the IDA and DCC do not have employees. Commerce Shiningo has employees and you contract for services, so technically the IDA has no stack, we're here to help you and assist you, and we fill those roles, but you don't directly pay compensation for us, neither does DCC. So it's a contract that Commerce has with these organizations, um, predating a lot of people, and even talking to people who were on the IDA board twenty years ago, not sure how um this sort of was worked out to begin with, but what we found out was, it's a little gray that the IDA paid DCC, who then paid Commerce, because Commerce has provided service directly to the IDA, just like they do directly to DCC, and so the question wasn't why it's happening, it's very clear, the services that we're providing, but it wasn't clear why the money was going to DCC. So as you know from our checks that we cut, we cut a check to DCC every month to help pay for our portion of this contract. I did a little digging, I tried to talk to, you know, I talked to Eric Larson, who was on the board for a really long time, I talked to Brian, tried to find out a little history about why this was created in this way, no one is really sure. Um, we really felt like, again, to be proactive and make sure, make sure that we were moving forward in the best way possible, I didn't want to wait for the audit to come out to say, hey, maybe you should be relooking at this, I talked to Randy about it, we talked briefly with Brian about it. Um, really to just clear this up, we're um going to, just starting in twenty twenty-two, Commerce will build the IDA directly for services, and the IDA will directly pay Commerce, Commerce will bill the IDA directly for services, and the IDA will directly pay Commerce. It's no longer going to be filtered through the DCC. It makes it look like the IDA is just gifting money to the DCC, which you can't really do. If you look back at the administrative services agreement, it tells you why it's happening, and it's not that it's illegal, but it's a little muddy. So this clears away the mud.
Just, just quickly, there's one thing Alan talked, he said, the way we get this with the DCC, it looked like we're gifting money to them and there's no reason to give it to them. So this is.
Yeah. Yeah. And the other thing that we discovered, and you know, we, we talked about this a little bit last year, but we drilled down more into the numbers this year, the IDA was not paying exactly their share. We, I'm not sure where that original number came from about what the IDA was paying into DCC. It really should be the IDA, DCC, and Commerce equally sharing, you know, space. Everybody pays in toward compensation at some point, everybody helps pay for admin utilities. That's, that's the setup that we have here. It was a little lopsided. We were paying money into it, but not, not exactly equitable. So we took a lot of time, Randy was really helpful with this, taking a look at all of the, of the budget expenses, what it costs to have our space, what, you know, what the compensation was like for each employee, how those people directly affected either the IDA or DCC, and making sure that we were equitably paying back into the organization. And we've made those changes with this budget. I think too, you know, the IDA's in a, a good financial position where, you know, we haven't been for a long time, you know, partly because of the, you know, the, the projects that we've had coming in, you know, now it's looking even better that we have our building rented. You know, there's, there's a lot of things going on about why our, our organization is much more stable, and I think we're on much more even ground where we can make these changes. It's not a huge, huge difference, but we have made that change. And when we get to that part in the budget, I'll show you where that's reflected. So if you look at the admin services agreement, really the changes that I made were to just try to better express what we do in terms of financial management and oversight and, and what services Commerce gives to the IDA for that. And then the biggest changes just had to do under the payment, and basically saying that Commerce, basically what it says, Commerce is now going to build DCC, they're going to build the IDA separately. So beginning in 2022, we'll be paying Commerce directly, not the DCC. Any questions on that? I know if you haven't been involved with it, it might be slightly confusing. And we do this annually, this admin services agreement. So this is a contract we do every year, you know, at the end of the year, ready for the following year.
The only one that I'm curious, just, this, this year, I'm seeing why we give the, we give the Commerce Shenango 5% of the loan project fee in project cost.
Yep. Again, to, to help support the mission of Commerce Shenango. It's a very small amount. The money used to be given through a different avenue, and this is a way, it used to be given as pass-through, pass-through through DCC. Now, since we're not doing that, it still is a way to help support the mission of Commerce and what we do in terms of supporting economic development and promoting the area and, and all of that. So it's a small amount, and it's just because it's now taken out of the bulk. Do you want to move on to the budget, or do you have any questions about this?
Second to last page, halfway down, item number one, so CCE IDA also gives pay DCC. Is that? I'm not sure what number is.
Oh, it's 20, sorry. I changed it and then I'm back in it.
Okay. So it's 25% of all new and existing project fees, project closing, annual administrative fees.
Yeah.
Are, are we allowed to pay DCC for that based upon?
Yes.
Again, we're using public funds to, can we pay DCC directly, or would that have to go through Commerce as well?
No, this is, this is different. And these are not technically public funds, they're project fees. So public funds would be like if the county gave us money and then we pass that through. We can't do that.
Okay.
But this is different because this is related to a project.
So in project, we're going to give up 30%?
Right. We technically do that now, just through a different way. That's not an addition, that's just changing the way money is passing through. And that, you know, DCC is the entity that does loans. They do a lot of the economic development projects.
So we're supporting a lot of our mission, vision through DCCs.
Right. Yeah, that's why we have an LDC, because there's things that the IDA can't do. So that's our, that's our way to feed into that program by, by using some of the money that we pull in to put back into the community for small business loans and grants and some of the work that DCC does. And save through Commerce, that's why. It used to be a pass-through with the money we gave through DCC that went to Commerce, now it's just separated out. But good question. Okay. So is it okay if I go on to the budget?
I bet.
Okay, all right. So just going through the budget, just want to know, so we did add money back in for the, the rents at the O'Corr Building under revenue. Any of the other additional, the Clark Park rent, all of those are staying consistent with the contracts that we currently have. We did update all of the fees that we would earn for the current pilots, the way that they're sitting right now. So you'll see the, the Norbit Solar, I believe that's what it's going to be, because we haven't had the closing yet, that number might change slightly, the, the annual admin fee. And that also depends on when we close the project. If we actually don't close, close the project and have the finances happen, right now it's supposed to happen in 2021. If we don't technically close it till 2022, that number will jump, because we're planning on getting the closing fees for that project. So depending on how they, and I still don't know how they want to do the closing fees. So again, I think the revenue line for that will jump, but sometimes people do closing fees all at once. We've also offered them to spread it out over a number of years. With the larger projects, we've got a larger number of years with that. So I still don't know what that final revenue amount will be, but if anything, it'll go up, it won't go down. And then that, it also reflects the amount that we'll see from the High Bridge Wind project in 2022. We'll receive a large installment upon closing on the anniversary. We'll receive this next installment that you see listed here. And then there will be 20 equal payments starting in 2023 out. So that will be a continued revenue line for that project. Down under expenditures, this is where you see those changes that were reflected in the contract, the, under the economic development. So this is the revised agreement amount. Previous years, it had been broken out separately, and now it's one line item. I did note the project fee to DCC, again, it's just reflected above. So as that number changes with project fees, the number that's expensed out will change, but I did it based on the numbers we know today, also including the, the project fee to Commerce. We went down through the rest of the, the regular expenditures and increased them as, as necessary, make sure they reflect what we're currently paying. So, you know, under auditing, we changed it to 6,800 because we know that's what it costs us this year. We upped our legal expense amount too, just to try to take care of, taking a look at what we spent this year for legal expenses and extending the amount for 2022. And then we did, we kept that amount in for the contingency budget, which was something that was a grandad added. That last year, that was a good idea to have some contingency money available. As you see, I didn't use it this year, but it was, it's nice to have it in case we do have a project or something come up that we have to take care of with the IDA that, you know, we don't have it budgeted for. So unbudgeted expenses is what the contingency budget is for. And then the depreciation expense, that will again, some of this will change if we do decide to sell the building down at the incubator property, but we have to spend in the budget as is of what we know today. So at the end of the day, we're looking at a net of $33,000 for 2022. Any questions? For our new report numbers, I'm happy to, if you want to sit down separately at some point and go through a little bit more line by line about where the numbers come from and all of that. I know if you were new, it might sound a little confusing to you, but... And we'd be looking for a motion to approve the budget. We have to get the budget uploaded to the Paris system before the end of the year to be compliant with the AVO. Tomorrow, we'll be doing the DCC budget for the same reason. And then Carrie Anne has to get really involved and knowledgeable of Paris, not the city. Paris is our online reporting, listen to the state if you don't know that. I think they call it something nice, so that it sounds nicer. I'm going to spend time in Paris today.
I'm looking forward to it.
All right. So at this point, I need a motion so that if you resolve that the Shenandoah County IDA approved the proposed 2022 budget as presented. Need a second?
For a second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote?
Blanche, aye. Raymond, aye.
You got one.
Give it aye.
Corey, aye.
Bert, aye. Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Yeah.
Been in that process, it's not easy. Future business, December meeting?
Just a reminder, last month, we talked about a couple of things that we were going to address in December. One of those is taking a, a deeper look at our mission statement and performance goals for the year, maybe setting some new goals for 2022. And then any offers that we have on the incubator building, we'll be reviewing at that time, and also talking about next steps and possible uses for any revenue we would get if we decided to sell. So just a note of a reminder. So next month's meeting will be fun, don't miss it.
Good. Any reason to go into executive session today?
I don't have any, unless you do.
Does anybody else have any reason to go into executives? Yeah, you will. You do? Personnel, what's it, legal, personnel? It's a, it's a thing that came up when I was talking to our.
Is it legal?
Legal, yeah, okay. So I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss legal. Need a second? Second, okay. We'll vote. Oh, any discussion? Sorry. We'll vote.
Blanche, aye.
Give it aye. Corey, Bert, aye. And we do not expect to take any action.
Thank you.
Thank you.